Kelsey is joining us, but we'll see who's here. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask everyone to do a pledge of allegiance. I'll start it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation
Must be what it sounds like on a satellite link.
All right, thank you, everyone. If we have Danielle, a roll call, please.
David Newbill.
Present.
Jenny McKay.
Present.
Lynn Shank.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
Jim Christopher.
I'm here.
Neil Latlin.
Present.
Jennifer Savanyay.
Here.
Jim Kelty. Nope.
Yeah, I haven't seen him come on yet.
Okay.
Before we go any further, I just want to talk about the procedure to use when we're doing the Zoom meetings. In our last meeting, Ben had advised us that they were recommending everyone do a roll call vote instead of just group yays and nays on certain motions. But I'm not gonna follow that advice. Where we have a roll call, so we know who's present. And for the simple procedures of approving the agenda, approving the meeting minutes, let's just do the ayes and the, you know, nay. And if there are any dissenting nays, then we'll go back and do a roll call. But as long as everyone present is saying yay, I don't think we need to take the time to do a roll call because with our internet connections, that can be slow to try to go through. If we have an action that we need to take where there's a motion made on some action, not just the procedural agendas, but some action, then we'll do the roll calls. But as we go through and just do the, and we don't have any tonight. Tonight is really just an informational meeting. So I'm saying we'll just do, you know, the ayes and the nays and then save a roll call for when we have an important vote on something, okay?
Okay.
It was me.
All right. All right. So with that, the next on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes, not from, but from September 22nd. Prior to everybody joining, I had a couple of edits, corrections, I should say, that I gave to Danielle. And so they were just, some of them were just typos. And one was a sentence that I don't, I think somehow just got added and wasn't necessary. I mean, I'll go through them if you want, but if anyone had any comments or questions on the meeting minutes, that would be your time to ask Danielle or state them.
This is Jenny McKay. My name was not listed as members present. This is Jenny McKay. My name wasn't listed as a member present on the last meeting.
Okay, I'll add it.
Very good.
Okay.
Any other comments or corrections?
I make a motion that we accept the changes, some of them in dates and spelling, and obviously a missing member, that the minutes be approved.
I'll second that.
Okay, David did the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any nays? Okay. Meeting minutes for September 22nd are approved as corrected. And I see we've got Mr. Kelty has joined us. Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry for the delay.
No problem. No problem. You can do the pledge of allegiance on your own later.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we've, Jim, we just approved the meeting minutes from last time. There were a couple of corrections that we made. Danielle's got that. And then next would be the approval of this evening's agenda. I have no corrections to it unless someone else does. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
We had two gyms, so I'll let Danielle figure out which one she wants to credit that one to. You could say Jim K and C, right? All right, so the, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. All right, the agenda is approved. Thank you. As I stated at the beginning of this meeting, we really just have some informational items that we wanted to talk to you about tonight. And one is a business concept that some folks have for development of a parcel on Dixie Highway. And I'll tell you, Bob and I met with them and reviewed this a couple of weeks ago. And when they first presented this, I said, you know, this is exactly what we don't want on Dixie Highway. And they looked at me startled and, but as we talked through it, and I understood their concept a little better. I think it's a great idea, and I think it'll be an asset on Dixie Highway. But it did take a little talking through it and trying to understand the concept. So I say that caveat just to kind of, you know, hear them out to what they're saying. Because at first blush, you know, I was like, you know, squishing my nose, saying, oh, no, I don't think so. But I think it has merit, and I think it's worth talking about and getting some of their ideas. And they'd like to hear some of your ideas also. Because as we develop the Dixie Highway, you know, we want to make sure that we do it with a lot of forethought and understanding as to, you know, what we want that corridor to look like. So with that, I will hand the topic over. Mr. Salz.
Yes.
Did I have your name right? Are you the presenting? Okay.
Yes.
Bob, are you presenting tonight for this?
No, I'm here just to watch and answer any questions that came up from our meeting.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Salz.
Thank you for your time. So our concept is site condos for storage of around 1,000 to 2,000 square foot garages that could store RVs, boats, cars, and with a single bathroom in it. And we were thinking on that we have a road intersecting the property going to the back and the south part where the buildings are two rows wide would be the site condos. And the other three up on the north side between the wetlands could possibly be just for people to store stuff, you know, just rental spaces, same kind of buildings. There was some concern at our, just when we were presenting our idea to make, to put in a berm. So we did include that, a berm with evergreens. And then the front part of the property on the west side up on Dixie would just be for retail buildings. Perhaps just individual buildings, so it's not some big strip mall. I know you said you didn't like that. And I don't think there's that much room for that many of them. So they would just be individual standalone buildings, you know, perhaps a Dairy Queen, a Coney Island and stuff like that. And I think even on that northern part along Dixie could even be for a nursing home if we could find someone interested right up there. And then the back would just be storage where you don't want a bathroom and stuff in it and maybe a little office. It would just be to put vehicles in back there too on that, up against the east side of the property along the power lines. And this is just a rough layout, but it's, we've got a couple of subject fills, a couple of wells, a drain basin, and then, you know, dealing with the wetlands, there's potentially, there's a little more room on there that could have some more buildings if it works. So it's basically for now, so we were, we'd like to get it rezoned so that we could possibly do that.
Could you tell me where this is located on Dixie? There's no reference that I can see on your map.
It's just kitty corner from the Mount Holly, right on the, let me see. What's any, let me scrap the name of the road. Is it?
Trip Road.
Well, High Ridge, what is that ridge? Oh, it's off my map. I can't see it. It is north of the subdivision that's on Dixie Highway at Trip Road. Oh, okay. And south of the haunted house. Yeah.
When you scroll down and expose the top edge of your visual, is that rotten manor? Right there?
Well, I believe it's the haunted house up there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the storage barn, Jim, that they use to put their stuff in in the summer.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The property now has a log home on it up in the front. It's in really bad shape. It's all the logs at the base are rotted, and then it's got the pole barn. And the renters just moved out of there and cleaned up most of their junk. They had a lot of abandoned cars out behind the pole barn.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the end of the road in the back of the lot, are those buildings, proposed buildings?
The red ones are, yeah. That would just be, again, just narrow storage garages, maybe for a boat or an RV. Somebody just wanted to put in there, and they don't necessarily have to be heated or have a bathroom in them. They wouldn't have a bathroom in them. It would just be, because I, well, we've looked around and we think there's a big potential for RVs, boats, and cars that people want to store. They don't have room on their, in their subdivisions or wherever.
So these would be site condos. These would be owned by people, not rented over a period of time?
Well, the first one through 13 would be just the site condos. The other ones, up on the north side of the road, the three units there, they would just be for, perhaps just homeowners rent little places to keep their stuff in, just standard storage garage.
Right.
And then the back, we just, it was narrow back there to put a road to turn around. We could just squeeze in things. We found a couple of places like that where people just parked their boats and RVs inside and, you know, so they're not unsightly in a subdivision or whatever, where they can't keep them.
You say these would have bathrooms in them?
The one through 13, yeah. It would be, like I said, 1,000 square feet to 1,200. There would be a bathroom if they want. We could plum for it, and, you know, they would be heated, and they could have a little office in there. But they're not to live in. They're just unfinished inside, just rough industrial.
Right.
Metal buildings, basically, except for, you know, along the road, we would try to make the ones facing the road. They're 350 feet away from Dixie Highway. They, we could, you know, fix them up a little better up there behind the berm. So it doesn't look like typical metal buildings.
Right. Bob, do you have any elevations at this point, anything preliminary?
No, I don't. I mean, I have this rough picture of the ones over in Fenton that we looked at. But that's just basic. I mean, we could take it that next step to start doing it if it looks like it's a possibility with the township.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So what zone, what do you want this to be rezoned to? Has that request already been made?
Well, not yet. But I mean, I guess I was talking to Danielle, I think maybe B3, but I don't understand your zoning, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Michelle, this is Bob. Jenny and I had a meeting discussion with them, and this is a 40-acre parcel, which when we were talking to them could be used for PUD development because of the different uses they're proposing on the same 40 acres. Would you agree, Jenny?
Yes.
My other two questions were, the site condos, I see 1 through 13 and then 15 through 17. That's what you're proposing now, and then it, towards the west side, those all say future development, so those would come as a second phase?
Well, that would be just for commercial buildings up there, retail, or, you know, potentially on the north, that north spot there, that one little section could be a future nursing home if we could get someone interested for that, or assisted living, not nursing home.
Okay, but the intention is, because it says future, so I was just wondering if you were doing this in phases?
Well, yes, we, the first phase, we would want to do the one through 14, or just, actually, a third of that, just start out. And then, you know, just as it goes along and we develop it, and then we would have to come in, I guess, and get approved, whatever buildings would go along the road. That would just be, like I said, retail or commercial along those lines. Something that's standalone buildings that look halfway decent. They wouldn't be metal buildings, it would be.
Right. Okay, and then just my last question, sorry, is this an eagle-protected wetland or pond or?
Well, the pond isn't even a pond. There's, somebody's used block and pallets to make the dam. It's a creek, but it's been dammed up going back as far as 30 years. And the dam's given away a couple of times, but it's cinder blocks, 12-inch cinder blocks stacked that aren't mortared with pallets behind it, and it looks like maybe beavers helped out by putting a lot of mud and stuff behind it.
Okay.
But if you go back to 1940, it's just a creek, and then you can see where that went up and down, and it was connected to the other one. Now it's not. There's two separate ones on the haunted house property. That's dammed up too, right there.
Okay.
But we were gonna leave it, and we would just do it better so it doesn't blow out. And I would think it's about three feet high if there was kids playing downstream from it and that thing ever burst. So we would have to address it so that it's more of an asset than, you know, but it's not done right. It would have to be done so it holds water and won't blow out. And I, that, in the subdivision down there, there's the one house just east of the subdivision that, they got a rectangular pond that's part of it, but that was put in about 1963 is the first time I saw it on the county maps or the county aerial photos.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Michelle, I'm not, but I think all of this is actually part of Thread Valley's creek that runs from the subdivision north of Trip Road, down through here, past the old Middleton Mine that Tolliver had, and then eventually north out of the township. I'm pretty sure that this is somehow all tied together in that Thread Valley Creek.
And just to kind of follow up on some of the discussions that we had, what I didn't like was the concept, we would just have a bunch of metal buildings, you know, another storage facility along Dixie Highway, because we have one to the north where it's just, you know, storage buildings. So, but the concept here that I think is of value to the community is having that commercial space for a lot of the home entrepreneurs that are maybe running it out of their garage or their basement. This gives them an opportunity to have a commercial address and facility that they can, you know, have a small business, maybe a carpenter or a plumber, you know. So I, I think it's a need that is not met in the community right now. But the trick here would be, it's great to have a need met, but we also want to be careful about the aesthetics of what goes out. And so the concept of a berm, a few hundred feet back from the road to kind of obscure this, I think is a good idea. The businesses, the commercial businesses that would be placed up at the road frontage of Dixie would be under a more stringent architectural review as part of our Dixie overlay corridor. So that would be a little bit different. And then the other concept is that traffic in and out of this, we really want to make an effort to have minimal curb cuts up and down Dixie Highway because we know to the south of us and Waterford, you know, they overdid it. And, you know, every five feet, it seems like you got a business where people are pulling in and out of it. And so we don't want to do that. So we've talked about, you know, here they're showing two curb cuts. We'd have to take a look at that because the concept we'd like to see is that you get off the Dixie Highway, and then you've got an interior route that you can take if there are different businesses you want to frequent, rather than having people pulling in and out. And as you know, we're south of the Renaissance Festival, but we still have a tremendous amount of traffic during certain portions of the year here. So we want to be careful about what we're doing with traffic in this area also. So those were kind of the things that we discussed when we had this. And with that, I'll leave it to anyone else that has questions or comments they want to make.
I have a comment. What about the berm? How soon will you make the berm and put the trees on top to obscure those buildings? Will they be made after the buildings are there or before?
Well, we could do it first. That's easy, easy part of it. It's easier building buildings, so we could do that first. And I was thinking, you know, to, to make it look better, we could even do the roofs and shingles in the first, the front three buildings if you allowed them. So you wouldn't see a metal roof.
Well, according to your diagram, you're going to make the berm about what, six feet high?
And then the evergreen.
And then trees on top?
We would put six-foot evergreens to start, yeah. They would grow taller, but we would buy six-foot evergreens to start.
So that would be your barrier, the evergreens, not a dirt berm and then trees on top of the berm?
Well, combination, six feet of dirt and then evergreens, so that it's not just so big height thing of dirt, and it would look better.
Okay.
I've got a question on the retail aspect of this. Over on the left, it shows future development. We talked about possibly having retail there with sites 1 through 13 or 14, which would be site condos. Would there be any retail business served directly out of those businesses? Or is that merely a place for a retail place to operate, but not necessarily be open for parking and customers coming in and that type of thing?
Yeah, it wouldn't be open for, it would just be for the small business guy to have a place to keep his stuff in that. And some people might want to, you know, like have a carpenter shop in there, whatever, or metal shop if they're doing it. But it's not for people to come buy stuff. That's not retail.
Right, so you wouldn't have cars coming in and out as a retail business throughout between the buildings and parking and all that?
No, and I guess, you know, we could make sure of that. We can put it in our, I guess, the bylaws to make sure that doesn't happen.
Right. Any idea of hours of operation or how this would be opened? Would the backend be gated with security access, that type of thing?
There would be two gates into it, and they would all, they would have a security code only to get in for the owners. And then it would be open 24 hours to go in and out.
Any issues with lighting? I know on other projects, we've had locals, you know, concerned about lighting aspects. If this is open 24 hours, would there be a lighting issue?
Well, I hadn't thought of that, but I don't think so. We could, you know, control that too. And there is a 50-foot berm in the existing woods between that subdivision there. There's four houses that are, they've got to be, well, they're only, they would be about 150 feet away, well, to their property, but I guess it'd be, they're a couple hundred feet away at least.
Just trying to think about what kind of concerns might come up. Yeah, light trespass will be important to the community.
Well, we could, again, deal with that in the bylaws if necessary, whatever you would want.
Bob, you envision this phased in terms of, let's say, asphalt pavement? Do you envision paving between the condos or gravel? How do you visualize this, not only as an end product, but in the course of phasing the construction, please?
Well, I was thinking maybe just asphalt around the perimeter, but inside I would like to do gravel. I don't like a lot of asphalt. It just, you know, the water could soak into the gritted land like it's always done if you have crushed limestone, and it's not going to be that much traffic. So that was, we have to think that out some more, but I didn't want to make a big asphalt parking lot everywhere.
No, I'm just curious. I appreciate that. I don't think I have any more questions.
Well, my question would be to the board members, is just a general sense of the concept here. I mean, we can work out details, but of the concept, is this something that you think would be of value to have it, you know, within our corridor here on Dixie Highway?
I think the earlier comments about this, you know, as long as it meets the requirements of the overlay, you know, the Dixie overlay from an appearance standpoint, as we said with the ORV park, maybe there could be small businesses that would be in support of the ORV park. And then you've got a good proximity to that. And of course, encouraging retail development on Dixie is a plus. So, you know, from an initial look, I don't see an issue.
Any other comments?
Jenny, from my perspective, I'm kind of seconding what Neil said. My concerns are I want something aesthetically appealing for the community, and it sounds like Bob is sensitive to that through berms. Potentially shingling the roofs and whatever comes of the retail in front, we'll still have some latitude to work cooperatively with the developers on that. So from my perspective, you've pretty much covered everything, curb cuts, again, aesthetics, permeable soil, trespass. We know development is coming. We have to try to make it as, what's the word? Sensitive, I guess, to the community as possible.
The existing buildings that are there in the, which would be to the west of the berm, what about that? Where's that in your plan?
Well, the one building to the west of the berm is the log cabin house. It's, I think eventually it needs to be tore down. We were just gonna leave. the log cabin house. It's, it's, I think eventually it needs to be tore down. We were just going to leave it there and use it as an office initially. But all the boards, all the logs along the bottom were rotted out. It's really rough inside. We got in there for the first time today. But, and then the, the pole barn's the same thing. It's just a pole barn. It's, it was never done right. Looks like they started at once from the historical Oakland County pictures and then tore it down and then started the second time. And in behind that log cabin house, that's that flat roofed area for carport. That's really, really rough. That for sure needs to come down.
Yeah, you could almost see that when you drive by it.
Yeah.
Well, I, I agree with what's already been said regarding road cuts. I would, I would like to see something along the frontage. So it isn't, and that, that wouldn't be in the initial plan, I'm sure, but farther out. Just something a little bit more aesthetic. I, I like the idea of a single cut as opposed to multiple cuts. And then that, that strip which would exist. You know, on the frontage, I mean, maybe we could do something there a- as far as planning goes. So it's just isn't all flat blacktop to the, the edge of Dixie Highway.
Well, it's, I mean, it's about 60 feet to that, that access road across the front, which would all be 35 feet from the property line, but it's about 60 feet, 65 feet to Dixie Highway from the access road. Not the access, but I mean, there's two accesses, but there's a 900 foot road running along there for the different retail businesses. So there would be plenty of room for plantings in that 35 foot strip. Shrubs, little things like that. It would, and the, the road itself, the, the 900 foot road to access the buildings would just be down lower, six inches lower with the curb. To drive along. But we were, we thought it'd be better if there was two accesses. It can be done with one, but I think they're about 750 feet apart, the two access.
Well, then that begs the question of the, the future development, if it were to be commercial development, what would their ingress and egress look like?
Well, no, they would only use those initial two. And that's why there's a, it says road there that runs parallel with Dixie.
Okay.
That's for two-way traffic for those businesses up there. Well, people going to the things would use them to their, their shops.
I have a question. If, if you're going to have businesses out front, where, where is anyone going to, going to park? I don't see any room for parking.
Well, they, they would have to pull off the road into the business and there would be room for single parking along the front of all of them. There, it's about 300 feet wide. Some of them are going to have to be smaller because of the septic system there. But if it ever, you get to the point where they bring that line down from Genesee County, that would solve that, but I guess we would only develop it as we found someone that was interested in having a retail business there or Coney Island or something like that, an ice cream stand.
So the
Room to park, but it, it wouldn't be real big businesses were big parking, but yeah, they would need parking.
I'm just having a hard time seeing how much of this, the outline on this diagram is, is for the building and how much is?
Blue box is the curb of the road where it says future development, two spots, the, the blue line is the curb of the road. There's a 50 foot, I think setback from the, the property lines. So on the, the north and south side, well, you have a road on the south side, but yeah, yeah, like right there. So the blue lines there are the curbs. And in that area inside, which is over a, a, close to 200 feet is a room for a building and parking in the front. And potentially, you know, the people running the business could even pull up from back and park in the back.
Okay.
And just have parking in the front for customers.
So there is enough allowance for, for parking then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time making out what that circle is.
That's the, the 300 foot radius for the well. You have to be away from the, the septic field. It has to be 300 feet away from the community well for the, for the development.
So then the, the area marked community septic field to the bottom of this drawing. That would also pick up the proposed commercial piece to the north of the road cut?
Yes. I mean, unless if you put a assisted living in there, you would need a separate one for that. But what, for these bathrooms, we was going to be the lowest rating and in these like site condos, it's just a single bathroom. It's not wouldn't get a lot of use. So I, I guess, I'm not sure how it works, but it's the lowest rating. That was what they were telling me.
Bob, you've talked about the potential for assisted living. What's, where's that coming from? And, and I mean that in a very friendly way.
Well, come nowhere. I mean, we thought about it. Jenny just mentioned to us that she didn't say she wanted it, but she said there's none in the community. So I just thought of it and other people have talked about it. I don't really want to do it personally, but my partners do, maybe one of them mentioned it anyway, but that's, that's just as a possibility. We're, we're open to, I guess it would be easier just to do retail places. Especially if, if there would be enough for the ORV thing. We think a third of the customers for these things could keep their vehicles for the ORV. If it keeps developing eventually.
Yeah, an assisted living facility might not go hand in hand with rotten manor, just, but just
Oh, well, I didn't even think of that.
I mean, it could get noisy.
Do you envision subdividing those buildings or would each building be independently owned?
Well, there would, maybe there would be 10 units per red rectangular square, the and so they just, like a typical site condo, they just own that, that part of it. And then the rest of it's community property and there would have to be a, you know, a maintenance fund for mowing the grass and plowing and all that stuff and maintaining them.
Bob, say that again. I'm a little slow. So building number eight might have 10 co-owners within building eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's, it's 200 feet by 50 feet. So for a thousand square feet plus or minus, that's approximately eight. I mean, it would be better if we could, you know, rent bigger and just deal with less people and do six per building or something like that.
Well, it, it, it debt density in each building, are, are you envisioning a plumbing outlet for each? Each of those units within that?
Yes. The, if they, they have the option, if they would want to, not everybody would take the option. They would just be using it for a little garage and that, but yeah.
Then, then it, if it, it follows then that if you multiply it all those buildings by 10, do you have the capacity for septic in that, in that scale?
Well, that's, I'm, we talked about it. Yes, I, I'm pretty sure that's what Keith Engineering took into account, but I will have to double check that. But that's what I talked to him about.
I see a septic field there, so.
We, we might, you know, if not, it's going to have to move in and some of the buildings will have to come out. We'll have to get, put the other side of the road. But we have to look into that or put it up there with the three things are for the, we would just think of renting.
So are you going to have crushed limestone around all these buildings?
Well, that was just my personal thoughts. I haven't looked into it any further.
Okay.
I mean, you would have to, some of it would have to be asphalt to get in and everything and maybe up in the front, it's the perimeter road. But then all, on the inner parts, it would be nice. And then we could even, there would just be doors on one side. So we even thought grass in between some of them, the backsides. They would just be a three foot inch exit door to get out the back and then it would be grass inside. You don't need vehicles to drive on it. So the, the roll up doors would face each other and then the backsides, the two backsides on each building would face each other. And so every other one would be green grass back there.
And then you envision an association with, that would maintain all of that. That would therefore become common property and be maintained by the association?
Yes.
The association would, would govern buildings one through 13?
Yes. Well, there's actually a little 14th building in between the wetlands, but yeah, there's, there's room for number 14. Sorry.
Interesting.
The, the dash, the light blue dash lines of the wetlands, we already had a, a wetlands expert go out there and flag it.
Does anyone have any additional questions or comments?
No, I can, I concur with the rest of the board or those that have spoken. It looks like a a decent plan as long as we have aesthetically acceptable buildings out front.
Well, that would be real easy. We've already done three successful projects like that. Where we took an old rundown building and made it way better than before. We even made the Detroit, I think it was Detroit Free Press 20 years ago. We took a rundown store and added onto it, fixed it up that the building had been there seven years. It was a grocery store. We did one in Ortonville. We did the Fenton Mall up there. That's a strip mall, but from what, when we got done with it, it was way better than what it was before.
What did you do in Ortonville?
We just did a part, a rundown party store. We just, you know, closed it, gutted out the inside, put a whole new facade on it. There was a garage. We connected it and got rid of the garage and did, you know, eat the stucco and a new roof and all that, new wiring and all new concrete in the front instead of broken down asphalt with potholes.
Which, which store is it?
I think it's Ortonville Liquors, what it's called.
Ortonville Liquors, where's that?
It's right by Glass Road, right next to that boat bar.
Okay.
It's just north of the boat bar on the, it, it's actually on the lake. It's on Eagle Lake.
Okay.
I mean, it's just something little, but it really, it looked like a thousand percent better.
Am I, this is a question to Jenny and Michelle. Am I correct that what's before us now is just to test the waters to see if the planning commission is receptive to this? And if we were to say that we were, we still have latitude to make strong suggestions to Bob's group in terms of landscaping. And as we said before, certainly we can keep the theme of the Dixie corridor. I just want to get a reality check. Is that what we're all visualizing here?
Yeah. So the, the, tonight was to kind of have a discussion for the board members to have an opportunity to see this presentation, ask questions. It's also an opportunity for Bob to hear the board members' views and thoughts regarding development of this parcel. Anything that would go forward would have to have a site plan approved. And that's when we would get into the nitty gritty details. And, and so, but this was really just a preliminary. Let's just talk about it, get a sense for what Bob and his colleagues' thoughts are, and then they can hear what our thoughts are.
Okay.
Sir, have you contacted Oakland County Sewage? How they would accept that many quote unquote bathrooms?
Well, not yet. That's something, the next thing we're going to have to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're working with Keith Engineering, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's their plan. They drew everything.
I have a question in regard to these buildings, one through 14. What caused you to want to put in such a type of a building? I mean, are you, do you have some of them sold or people interested in buying or leasing these types of sites?
Well, we don't have anything sold or anybody interested in that, but we do know that the, the ones they built 10 miles away over in Fenton or eight miles, whatever it is, they sold out right away. They, they sold all of them. It's a little smaller, but they, they had no problem. And then we had thought about it for years, just because I'm a former custom home builder from Birmingham Bloomfield Hills area. I did that for 25 years and I'm, I'm tired of it. It's too hard. This is just something easier to do development wise. And right now we do, we're back doing kind of custom work, but we do it in Kroger. So we have to go out there at night and, you know, we got 25 employees in our company. And we do full store remodels to every little thing. Moving around their equipment, everything, anything they need done, but it's, it's very demanding and hard. So we were just looking for something different and to get out of the night work. So I'm a contractor as well.
I'll, um, let me, let me be repetitive and then I should be done. Sorry, everybody. So my personal opinion is I think it's a pretty decent idea. Obviously there are some subtleties that Bob's group has got to work out. Subjectively, I'm all for whatever lead principles can be applied here from light trespass to permeable pavement. All the things that are important to us, Bob, out here have to deal with the environment, the community, trying to keep the, the rural nature as intact as we can. I will be huge in my mind to keep the visuality of this as natural as possible. Somehow obscure the buildings if that's reasonable. And then whatever tasteful development may come up front, I, I'm kind of okay with that. If, if, if you guys can do something along those lines, I would be in favor of this, I think.
Yeah, it's no problem. And there would be like no outside storage. And I think it would, would help for the people in the community to use it to get stuff out of their yards.
Are you kidding? That's why they live out here. So they can have
Well, if you have trucks and RVs and they're in the rain, it's not good.
You can make planners out of some of the old Dodges out here.
Well, I mean, I, well, anyway. Yeah, I guess a lot of people are that way. I mean, I could not believe, there must've been 20 cars behind that barn a month ago. But not to mention, they've been dumping logs and everything else back there. Building materials and dump trailers and stuff was there. You can still see it through the picture on number 11 and 12, all the junk that's there.
Oh yeah. I have a question. The north building along Dixie labeled for fu- future development. If, if that's in the area where you can't put a septic, I mean, are they going to pipe all the waste out of that area?
Well, it could go back. I mean, hopefully it would just be in the one, but we might have to put another field in the back, back there. I mean, I was hoping the retention basin that they have up, up there could be part of that wetlands. And I think that's more natural. If, if that's possible, and then there would be room there for that if, if needed. That retention, that little wetlands right there, the shape of behind building 17 and above 11, 12 and 13. You dug it, you can barely see it. 30 years ago, they dug a trench and drained it. It's still a wetland. It's real marshy when you step in it, but they lowered the water level in it when they dug that trench. You could see a crooked little drain each thing in the forties. And then you could see before all the trees grew where they dug a straight line and piled all the dirt.
On the east side?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I said, I see a trench there.
It's kind of straight. It goes, you can barely see it on an angle going back to the creek.
Yeah, I'm looking at a larger picture.
It, it used to be a farmer, I'm in the farm, and I think they did it to drain it, but it didn't drain it all the way down. We stepped in it. It was real, you know, you sunk down about six inches in the bog like.
Okay.
So if that could be used for the retention basin. And then is it, you know, everything settles out, then would go out into the, the creek. But obviously you have to give up something to meet all the requirements. And we thought maybe just by the time we got started, hopefully in the future. If they decide to, if you can do that thing where they come down Dixie Highway, we would just tap in there. But I know that's a long shot, but that would be nice if that happened in a few years.
All right, well, any any final comments on this? All right, well, I think we'll we'll close this topic and move on to the next. Uh, Bob, did you have any questions that for any of the board members before you finish?
No, that that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
All right, so, um, the next, uh, topic that we have is, uh, Michelle is going to be replacing Ben as our planner. Um, as you know, Ben's health has been on the decline. He he currently is feeling better. He's had some new medicine and uh, was, I think is on vacation with his daughter right now, so we wish him well. Um, but I asked Michelle if she would come and just do an overview of the what a master plan is for our township. We've been working with Ben on one for a couple of years now. And we're close to having it done and actually will hope to have it to be reviewed by all of you in our next meeting in January. And because we've got some new members and you weren't, um, on the board when we started this process a couple of years ago. I thought it would be a good opportunity to, one, meet Michelle. And two, to, uh, just kind of get an overview and agreement on what it is we're trying to achieve with the master plan before you actually get it to take a look at it. So with that, I'll hand it over to, uh, Michelle and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's it's nice to meet you all. Um, Ben is a very beloved colleague of ours, so I know I have big shoes to fill. But I will do my best getting as caught up as quickly as possible. I know you have a lot of things going on right now. Um, and that site plan that was just presented to us made me, uh, think of a few things. So I'll probably bring those up at the end of this little presentation. Um, so Danielle, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so like Jenny mentioned, you are in the middle of a master plan process. And for those of you who weren't there at the beginning, I want to briefly explain what a master plan is. Um, so it can most easily be explained by breaking it into three large sections. One is what you have. So this is, um, really an inventory of your people, your land, um, your economic conditions. When I see people, I mean, like demographic information, we want to know, are we growing? Are we shrinking? Are we aging? Are we getting younger? We want to inventory these big questions so that we can come up with answers to them later. So a lot of that part, um, from what I can see has been done. We've done an inventory of our existing conditions. There was, um, some community engagement done, so then we want to go to our community, ask them what their visions are, what their goals are, so that we can try to, um, align them. And then the third part is putting all of that together, all of our research, our vision, our community input with recommendations and strategies. So we're going from what we have, what we want, and then really a roadmap for how we get there. Thank you. So the master plan is a part of, um, the M P E A. So that's the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, which was updated in two thousand and eight. And this is the legislation that empowers the planning commission. It's what gives you guys the power to meet and be in charge of the master plan. And this is the document, um, that outlines what the purpose is at the state level for a master plan. So you can see, these are just some of the bullet points. There's a longer list. But the point of a master plan is to make sure that someone, a group of people are thinking about how we can coordinate development so that it's harmonious, efficient, economical, as opposed to a piece by piece, um, a kind of piecemeal approach. We want to always make sure that we're promoting public health, safety, prosperity and welfare. So we're reconciling change with the, um, benefits that it brings to our community. And then you can see here that they really want this to be a sort of local approach. So we want to consider the character of our municipality and what is suitable for you based on your trends and your population. Right? So like you've mentioned, you want to keep Groveland rural. That's something that we want to keep in mind when we're planning for our future. What else is very important is that in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which is another, um, piece of legislation that lays out all the rules for zoning and the, um, responsibilities of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In this piece of legislation, it says that zoning must be based upon a plan. And that's a reference to a master plan. So the master plan is your broad, comprehensive policy document that you use as a base, as your blueprint for your zoning ordinance. So I think the next slide shows how all of these things come together. Okay, so your master plan, like I was saying, is your most comprehensive document. And within that, it's required that you have a zoning plan, and that's where you lay out how you need to change your zoning ordinance so that it now aligns with your new vision and all of the policy you've laid out in the master plan. And then you implement that through your zoning ordinance, right? So your zoning ordinance is local law. That needs to be based on this larger framework. And this can be super informal. If anything I'm saying doesn't make sense, please stop me and unmute yourself and ask me any questions that you have. Another part of the master plan is the future land use map. Um, so I believe that you all have probably worked on that with Ben, but it might be, uh, worth revisiting as a group. This is sort of the first step before you might make changes to your zoning map. You look at your whole township as one, and it's a generalized map of your desired future uses. So it's not legally binding like a zoning ordinance is. You're not meant to go, oh, that parcel is meant to be this and that parcel this. It's more to show large swaths of area that you'd like to see develop in a certain way in the future. So it's really a broad framework that you could base any changes to your zoning map or zoning ordinance on. And that's an important component of the master plan. Okay, so what is your role in all of this? So the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, as you can see here, gives the planning commission all of the power. So you all have a very important role. I know you're volunteers, but this is a big position because you are in charge of how your community develops over time. And we all know that once development goes in, it's, uh, very hard to change or move. Okay, so that's why we do all of this forethought beforehand. But this legislation gives the planning commission the power to make and approve a master plan. So that means that you are the legal authors, guardians and enforcers of this plan. Even if you hire someone else to write it for you, once you approve it, it's yours. And I want you guys to know too that the legislation actually gives the planning commission the power to approve it. It's local ordinance that usually then punts to the legislative legislative branch to allow them to approve it. But in some communities, if you follow the strict letter, letter of the law, the planning commission can be the final approval of it. So that's how much power the state has given you all, um, over this process. So tonight is a good example that we were looking at a site plan review that shows the, all of the kind of responsibilities that the planning commission has. Where you're in charge of short and long term planning. So shorter term planning is looking at site plan reviews. You know, those can go through in about a month or two. Um, the permitting process, or if you just have small sections of your zoning ordinance that you want to update, that can be done in a couple of months. So that's the shorter term, but the bigger goal of the planning commission is to make sure that even those smaller actions that you take align with all of the comprehensive planning that you've been doing, that they align with the master plan. So this was a really good example tonight of the gentleman who just shared his conceptual review. And we're talking about the Dixie, um, overlay. As far as I know, that has not yet been adopted. So if we want to enforce any of that as a planning commission, we need to review and adopt that. Make sure that that's referenced in the master plan as the direction we want to go. Um, and then approve the concept because now we know that our shorter term goals are aligning with our longer term goals. So the master plan is really important because it's looking at least five years. The state wants you to review and update the master plan every five years, but generally we're looking farther, at least ten years into the future. So it's really important because it's a one stop shop where you have collected all of the relevant data, trends, projections. You list what best practices are. And you have one document that you can all bring to all the planning commission meetings to make sure that your decisions are aligning and are consistent with the goals that you've set for yourself. Now, when it comes to zoning, it's also really important to have things laid out in your master plan. It could protect you from future liabilities. So for example, here it shows in the, um, legislation that in case of a zoning, the matters to be considered by the planning commission shall include. And you can see there at the end that it's consistent with goals, policies and future land use map of the master plan. So that's in the state legislation. So if you have it all in your master plan and someone comes at you and they're upset with your decision, you have a document to point to that says this has been approved by our planning commission. We've gone through the state mandated process. Um, and so this decision isn't aligned with what we've come up with. So it's really important, as you'll see on the next slide, thank you, that if you write a master plan, we really want there to be consensus among the planning commissioners because if there isn't and you're not following it, um, you lose credibility as a commission, but also you sort of open yourself up to valid sort of attacks, or if you get sued by a developer, they have some standing if you have written something in your master plan and you're deliberately, um, not following it. So it's very important to have this document and to consistently, you can go to the next slide, and consistently follow it. So this is the last slide, and I just wanted to go over the process with you all. Um, because it is mandated by the state how you can proceed to approval. So I think we're still at stage one, which is city staff in, um, B R I, that's our firm, Beckett and Raider, Inc. Draft the master plan. So at this stage, Ben is handing that off to me. And I'll be working with Jenny on some of the edits. And the plan is in January to come with a draft for the planning commission to review. Maybe you'll need a few meetings to go over it if it's been a while, um, and that's fine. At that point, when you feel comfortable with the draft as is, then you request that it goes to distribution. So then we will take that draft plan and we will go to the legislative body. Um, sorry that that says city council, it should say, um, the Board of Trustees. And they are the body that is allowed to authorize it for sixty three day distribution. At that point, the master plan is open for the public to review for two, a little over two months, sixty three days. At that point, I will collect all comments that come in. Um, and as a group, we will look at them as they come in, discuss them, see if they're relevant. We are not mandated to incorporate everything that we hear, but we do like to compile a list of everything and look it over. At the end of that sixty three days, then the planning commission holds a public hearing. At that point, um, you could, if it's written in your zoning ordinance, adopt it and be done. Um, this is something I'll need to look into, or maybe you know. Otherwise, you, um, recommend it through resolution to the Board of Trustees, and then they will do the final adoption of the master plan. And then that is for you all to follow for the next five to ten years until it gets updated again. Is, are you raising your hand for a question? Go ahead.
Yeah. Michelle, we also would like to progress on the Dixie overlay.
Yeah.
And so I think we should try to target not only doing the master plan, but also doing the Dixie overlay at the same time.
Yeah.
And get through with that. And my question is, does the overlay have to be distributed for comments the same way a master plan does?
No, it doesn't have to go through like a sixty three day review period, but when you are amending the zoning ordinance, there is, um, there are state requirements for, um, people that need to be notified. So for example, you know, um, major utilities or anyone that major stakeholders, I'd have to read this legislation to know exactly, but people will have to be notified. There has to be a public hearing. Um, so there is definitely a process that we have to follow, but it's not quite as long or as involved as the master plan process. Um, but thank you for bringing that up because I would like to talk to you all about timing for that. When do you think we should combine those two at the next meeting? The discussion about both of them?
I think so. I think, Michelle, if you and I could work, you know, let's say in the next month on those documents, I I think it's important to start getting the rest of the board involved in that. Um, so we can, you know, get through it. I think we've had a lot of discussions in general. And I think now we just need to get the documents in front of them so they can see it and read it. Yeah, but the, but I'm gonna go back to my question, Michelle, because I'm still, um, I I'm not knowledgeable about the processes that you use with an overlay district. So I I'm new to overlay districts, so I'm not that familiar with it relative to ordinances, relative to master plan. So is an overlay district just another form of an ordinance?
Yes, as far as I know, and I'll double check, but I mean, that's just an update to the zoning ordinance. So you have to follow that process.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, please.
I don't have a problem with getting both of those teed up because we know we've been looking for them for a long time. But to refresh the discussion that we had earlier, Michelle, the fire station that we're going to move from Dixie Highway to the township property is far enough along now that I I can't redo the entire operation again for the building to make sure it is completely in compliance with the new overlay district.
Okay.
I need to have some way, and you had originally suggested possibly holding off on approving the overlay until we got the building breaking ground, but I'm open to any other alternative. I just can't um, kind of restart the whole process again. It's too far along.
Yeah, so it seems like it's a little bit of a challenge now with the timing with this request or this proposal. So, um, when do we think, you know, Bob, who just presented to us, whenever he comes back with a more thorough site plan? Then the next month or so, I guess we're just gonna have to figure out the timing on that. I think, what what do you think is the estimated timeline for the the site plan that you're working on?
The fire station, we're gonna hope to break ground in the spring.
You hope to break ground in the spring, but it hasn't, so then the site plan is already. You hope to break ground in the spring, but it hasn't, so then the site plan has already been approved.
Oh, no, no, no. I've got the architect doing the final drawings. This is, the building is not only to house our fire department, but the state police. So we had to go through some non-normal steps to go up to the people on Lansing at the Michigan State Police to make sure what we want to do with the building meets their requirements for the MSP. So they're kind of irrevocably combined into the same building. And we've got an approval from them with a couple of minor modifications. So I have the architect doing the final drawings on it right now.
Okay. Well, let's just stay close contact about the timing of that then. So that we can figure out where it's the best timing for updating the Dixie corridor overlay. And also to make sure that we can apply those standards to this new development that's coming in. Because that seems to be something that is very important to everyone on the Planning Commission, right? Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, he has quite a bit of work to do, and it's the holiday. So he might not be coming back with a more revised plan for a few months.
Well, and I, when I get this, the building prints for the new building, it will have a site plan and the whole nine yards with it this time. So we could probably, I think, potentially run that through the Planning Commission before this guy gets his plans ready for submission.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, any other questions or comments about?
I have.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have a question for the other board members. Do, do all of you guys have a copy of the current master plan that was done in two thousand and eight? If, if you do not have a copy of the existing plan, please contact Danielle. And Danielle, you know, we can always take mine and make copies of it if need be. But I think it would be helpful for you to have the existing master plan as, to look at as we also go to the new master plan.
I'm a big fan, if we can digitize this stuff too, it just makes it much easier to do notes on and things like that. If we can get digital copies, I don't have one, and I'd appreciate that.
I can scan it.
Thanks.
Yep.
I'd rather have a digital copy also.
Okay.
Very sustainable, you know.
You're so green, Jim.
Yeah, just call me crewman.
Okay, so then in January, when we meet again, I will have a draft of the new master plan that we're working on. So I'll, in the meantime, I'll be working closely with Jenny to pick up where Ben left off. And my goal is to usually send that to the Planning Commission at least a week beforehand. So we have time to review it. Do you guys want more time than that, or what's a good amount of time?
At least a week.
Week is good.
Okay. Okay, so then we can discuss that. I think we might want to budget for it, because it's going to be probably about a hundred-page document. So usually what I'll do is I, I just go through the highlights. I'm really picking out the major trends, the things we want to keep in, in mind. So that could be maybe the first half or an entire session. And then the second half or the second session will be really focusing in on our goals and the actions that we want to take. So it'll be a two-parter, potentially one meeting, maybe two. And then we will go through this process that I just laid out for you guys following the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Okay, that's it for me. If you don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
I don't. Yeah, I, I don't have any other questions. I do thank you, Michelle, for your presentation this evening and, and for picking up where Ben left off. We, we made a lot of progress with him, and, and so we, we need to get this done. So I don't like to let it sit there.
Oh, we will. We'll get it done.
All right, so with that, if there's no more comments or questions regarding the master plan and the Dixie overlay, I think we're ready to adjourn this evening's meetings unless someone has some additional comments, questions. I make the motion, we adjourn. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.